Good afternoon, welcome to City Council Work Session. Today is Monday, March 25th, 2024. It's approximately 1:00 PM. I am Mayor Enriquez. We will start with a moment of silence for the brave men and women of the United States Armed Forces as they protect our interests around the globe, as well as the courageous men and women of the Los Cruces Police and Los Cruces Fire Department. If you'll join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First thing, we'll start with jobs of the week. We have Sarah Rainey.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sarah Rainey, and I am the One-Stop Coordinator for the Southwest Region of the Workforce Connection. It's not opening. Let me try one more time. We'll see if it'll open. Maybe? There's no jobs. Actually, there's a ton of them. There's a ton of them. It's not wanting to open.
Sorry, it looks like Larry's account is logged in, so maybe that...
Okay. All right, we'll try one more time here. There we go. All right, for jobs of the week for March, for the week of March 25th, we have for the City of Los Cruces, we have an urban planner. The position starts at 53,000 and the posting closes on 4/1. We also have for the city, a juvenile justice continuum coordinator. The position starts at $24 an hour, and it is a continuous posting. For White Sands Missile Range, we have a program manager for the Qualis Corporation. The pay is depending upon experience and open intel field. For Garcia's Janitorial Services, we have a part-time janitor, which was about 30 hours a week is what they put in their posting. The position starts at $14 an hour and the posting closes on 4/18. For Zia Natural Gas, there's a service technician. The position starts at 19:50 an hour and the posting closes on the 14th as well. For Casa de Peregrinos, we have an intake coordinator at the central pantry. That position starts at $14 an hour and closes on the 10th of April. Just a reminder, this week, we have two major events here in the City of Los Cruces. We have the Mock It Tell You Rocket, that is actually tomorrow, where our local juniors and seniors will be doing interviews with potential employers and professionals across the area to learn how to present themselves professionally, learn to speak and dress, and all of the ins and outs of interviewing appropriately. As well, we have on Wednesday, at the Convention Center, we have our Spring Into Your New Career. We have a ton of employers coming that will be hiring, interviewing potential employers, employees. So if you're interested in a new career, just looking for something new, come and join us over there at the Convention Center from 2:00 to 5:30. We will have priority of service from 1:00 to 2:00 for veterans, so veterans, please come a little bit earlier. Also for the veterans, April 1st, we still have the Heroes Hiring Heroes event at the Los Cruces American Legion Post 10. And then we have those in Spanish as well. As always, if you have any questions, feel free to call us at 524-6250, or come see us at the Alameda office. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you, Sarah, and thanks for our technical difficulties bearing with us. Next, we have pets of the week. Amy DeFelix.
Hello, everyone. I'm Amy DeFelix with the Animal Services Center of the Mesia Valley. I'm gonna go ahead and get this started. And we always start off with our cat of the week. Our cat of the week this week, his name is Ken. His number 71521, and he says, "I'm a young cat full of energy and playfulness. I absolutely love getting pet, so much that if you aren't actively petting me, I will give you frequent headbutts to make you pet me. Since I have the soul of a wildcat but the heart of a spoiled house cat, my ideal home will have lots of cat furniture and toys to keep me enriched and stimulated while also showering me with love." And then we also have our dog of the week. Her name is Joy. Her number 61916, and she says, "I'm playful and loving, so it's such a surprise to everyone that I'm still waiting for my forever home. I love getting pets and attention, and I do well with other dogs. My perfect day includes going for a nice walk, playing with my toys, and then getting pets and cuddles from my favorite humans. Could you picture yourself in this scenario? Then come by and see me this week." And some events going on, we still have our Mutt Madness Adoption Special going on from now until the end of March, so this is coming Saturday. Adoptions are all discounted. All sterilized animals are adopted at any donation amount if you're choosing, and then unsterilized animals are $45, and of course, they will be sterilized before going home. We do have an off-site adoption event at the Pizza Hut on North Main this Saturday. We're gonna be there from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And I'd like to let everyone know, remind everyone, that the ASCMV will be closed in observance of Easter Sunday. We will have limited hours for office staff to reach out to owners needing to reclaim any missing animals that they might see at the ASCMV. And on Facebook and Instagram, the day on Easter Sunday, we'll be posting which on-call number to call, and then specified times, in case you need to reclaim your missing animal on Easter. And here are all of our links, of course, our website, ascmv.org, all over social media, so Facebook, Instagram, TikTok, and our podcast is on YouTube and Spotify and Apple Podcasts as well. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Amy. And next, we move to our agenda items, 3.1. Nuisance Abatement Team Activity Update, Larry Nichols.
Good afternoon, Mayor Enriquez. A member of City Council, Larry Nichols, Community Development. Just take a moment, I had myself logged in, but I needed to log out, and we're logged back in now. Thank you, once again, Larry Nichols with the Community Development. Thank you very much for being here today to speak to you about the Nuisance Abatement Team. I last spoke to you about the Nuisance Abatement Team at the City Council Budget Retreat, and at that time, we mentioned that we had a different name for the NAT before. It was used primarily to acquire properties for the purpose of building affordable housing and finding those properties that could be acquired, demolished, and for new projects. But we have found that what was happening with that, it was really helping us to abate some of the blighted properties that we have in our neighborhoods. Blighted properties are in many different forms, and we'll discuss those. But we rekind of restructured the Nuisance Abatement Team. The Nuisance Abatement Team is composed of several city staff, community development, it's also Chief Smith, Fire Marshal Landavazo, Officer Roach, and our legal department, primarily with Mr. Douglas. Our goals are to improve the neighborhood's safety and environment, and we've been hearing quite a bit of that in recent council meetings. We find that there are conditions that there are properties that are vacant, and they're being occupied by unauthorized entry. They harbor some activities that have caused the neighbors to be concerned about what is going on in their neighborhood, and so we have taken a real effort to work in abating those. So our goal is to improve the neighborhood's safety and the environment. We try to achieve that through voluntary compliance, working with the responsible property owner. And our first effort is to engage with them, to ask for abatement, in any form it might be, whether it's cleaning up the property, whether it's board and securing the property, or even getting to our last resort, which is condemnation and demolition. We provide notices by postings of the abatement order through our code enforcement officers, primarily, and issued after we have done a property report, and to notify the owner of the conditions that need, require abatement. And those property reports are available to the public. We have them available on the website, on the ones that are going to the demolition and condemnation. We always afford due process. If a property is issued an order of condemnation, the property owner has the right of appeal, and they have 15 days to file their appeal, and then the appeal will come to City Council for a final decision. Abatement compliance, we use our building codes, primarily for board and secure and condemnation, demolition. Our future project identification, if we find a property that the property owner, for a variety of reasons, determines that they will not do anything with the property to abate the property as the notice requires, then we go through a series of processes with notices, issue of citations, hopefully achieve the board and secure, and as I mentioned earlier, our last resort would be condemnation and demolition. Should the city have to undertake the demolition at our cost, we do file lien with Donaiana County Records to recover our cost for the demolition. So here's the kind of the process that we use when complaint is received. It can be filed in many different lines, 911, online with City Council, with code officers. If the violation is found to be a yes, it goes to the council, the codes officer contacts property owner to talk about the violation. If it's a no, then the violation is not found, then the case is closed. So if we go down the last, the yes, we find that there's a reinspection may be required after we have notified the owner to see if it has been, any of the abatement has been achieved. If it's a yes, then the case is closed, and the records are maintained. If it turns out that the reinspection shows that there's been no abatement achieved with the investigation and the inspection, then the code issues, citation is issued for the violation. When that is issued, then it goes down for a reinspection again to see if there's been any compliance. If it is yes, the case is closed. If it's a no, the code goes, goes to code, informs the legal department, and the notice is sent by email, by registered mail, for the abatement. It goes to a hearing, and a hearing can be requested, and then if the hearing is set, then the, and the hearing is determined, and the case is resolved, at that point, the compliance case is closed. If it's a no, we obtain quotes for abatement, abatement or demolition. Abatement can be achieved by board and secure as well, and we may have to get bids on what the costing is for that, if the owner is not volunteering to do it on their own accord. So we monitor and secure and clean and lien as required. A property requires demolition, it goes to yes. Well, first of all, if it goes to no, then the lien is placed and just recorded as needed, if needed. If it's a yes, the resolution of the condemnation goes to City Council. City Council considers the case. If approved, then the demolition is accomplished at city expense, then a lien is placed on the property. Our abatement tools that we use are our building codes, the ones that we have recently adopted, which is the most recent edition of the International Code Council, the 2021 codes, the building code, the international fire code, the international residential code, and the first time, we've had the International Property Maintenance Code, but that was adopted this last fall. And with that, I'll ask Fire Marshal Landavazo to speak to you about some of our blighted properties.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Battalion Chief Fire Marshal Michael Landavazo, for the record. I just wanted to share with you some of the properties that our team aims to abate. On the left here, you see 1245 Van Patton. We've had two fires at this location, and you can see the state of the property, obviously unsafe to occupants or first responders. On the right here, we have 375 Karen. I believe council's already given guidance to demolish this property, but we have had eight fires here going back to July of '22. And as you can see, the roof is no longer there, the walls are pretty unstable, and again, very unsafe for any occupants or first responders having to respond there for fires or EMS calls. Here's another property, 1308 Brownlee. From the outside, doesn't look too bad, but once you go inside, you can see the wood frame and the rafters are charred all the way through, making it an unstable structure, and again, unsafe. Oh, go back. We've had 25 calls for service at this property in the last year, including two fires and six trespasses. So this, this is one we definitely want to abate. 900 El Mendra, we have had four calls of service in the last year at this one, including one fire. As you can see, the inside is pretty damaged and presents conditions that are not safe for public or first responders again. But that's just kind of the kind of idea of the properties that we're aiming to abate. Thank you.
One of the more notable properties that we handled this last year was the Kilby Motel. And we took action on that, and it was abated. The owner did take underneath the abatement through demolition. Another one that we addressed was 410, 430, excuse me, 430 South Main. That property had been in a condition, probably recall seeing this picture as you drove down Main Street a number of times, it was in that condition, basically unfinished, for about 15 years. There were a number of service calls required, there was unauthorized entry to the building, and basically, it was just an eyesore for the city. And we were able to work with the owner, and he agreed to demolish the building at his, at his cost. There is the site that, once it has been demolished and cleared, an aerial view. That's the three structures you see in the upper image here. That was the roofing of that structure, and then this was the very last scene that was seen on the demolition. We have in that dashboard... I think when I logged out, I think I lost my link to this. So I'm probably not going to be able to display it now. But I was going to show you that what we have on our NAT dashboard is the way we recordize, we recordize our investigations and our tracking. See if I can try it. I think it's not going to allow me to go back to my link. I'll just explain what was on the link. It showed that we have our different levels of investigation. We have what we call Level 1, Level 2, and Level 3. Level 1 is things such as weed and debris, or abandoned vehicles in the front yard, that type of thing. Level 2 is one is vacant buildings and unsafe structures. And then Level 3, we call our emergency, our urgent properties that need attention in our direction right away because they represent a condition for a neighborhood that is both unsafe and a detriment to the neighborhood. So we have 163 of those properties, and we have them divided up into all districts, each district, each one of your districts. We have the properties located. We can provide that information to you, and then we have established a request for, we call them our priority, our top 11, that we'll be addressing this year, pursuing abatement with the property owners, in some cases, board and secure and maintain secure. Other places, other cases will be elevated to either condemnation or demolition. We have, we engage in this activity every single day. We have, we engage in this activity every single day. We take the requests that you have for us to look at and we investigate those. We have the ones that we investigate that we have found, either through the police department or the fire department that are required to be investigated. And that basically is my, our presentation today. I have members of the NAT abatement team here to answer questions that you may have for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Any questions from council, Councilor McClure?
I have two questions. The first one is, does the workflow change if it's say a contributing building in a historic area? Is that something you guys look at?
Mayor Enriquez and Councilor McClure. We, yes, we have several different overlays in the city. South Mesquite District Overlay is one of our historic districts. Alameda Depot is another. But what the process we have, if we have a property in one of those districts, we have a process that we, if it's going to go to demolition, three agencies, the city agencies reviews that. The building department, which involves inspectors and the building official. It involves the utility company, looking at the utilities and then how they are, need to be addressed. And then the third review is the historical preservation specialist to see if there is a, if the property is either contributing or non-contributing.
Thank you. The other question I had was, say it's demolished and the land is sitting there. Is, does that just sit there until something else happens to it or until the property owner decides to do something with it?
Mayor Enriquez and Councilor McClure. The, the thing about property ownership is that it does have, it does have its privileges. And if the property owner determines that they are going to have their property available for a new structure or a new use, in many cases, sometimes they ask for rezoning. So they could go into maybe a commercial venture. But that, that decision-making about what happens to the property after it's abated is the, is the property owner's.
Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Larry, on the abatement policy, I'm new to it. I've only had three months to read 7,000 pages of different laws. But do you give, you do give special consideration for the historical sites? And you do check with the society? Are they part of the reviewing panel?
Yes, Mayor Enriquez and Councilor Matisse. When a property is in the historic district, the historic preservation specialist, who is the liaison to the historical preservation commission, will place it on their agenda for review. It's also taken to the state historical preservation office for a determination, if it's unclear, for a determination if it is a contributing property or not.
Councilor Corrin. Obviously the, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Larry, for this presentation. The, the places that you all showed us are hazardous and uninhabitable. But I'm curious, I think about, I think there are other situations where places are on the margins, I guess, where they're in this, in the workflow and perhaps in the nuisance abatement conversation, that where people are living, living in those spaces. They may be old motels like the Kilby, but I think there are other parallel ones. Is there a process that accounts for those folks? And potentially to support landlords and remediating things to make things habitable? Are there, are there opportunities for them to do that? And how is that the folks who are there in, in places that are habitable or even places? We have seen a few homes where it sounded like people were living, maybe because they owned it or maybe, maybe because they were renting in a very sort of questionable situation. But is there, what are the processes when someone's living in a space that, that might be labeled as a nuisance or in this process?
Yes, Mayor Enriquez and Councilor Corrin. Once we have, have received a complaint, a complaint is, as I mentioned earlier, can come from several different sources. But many times the complaint comes from the people that are occupying one of these structures. And the complaints are in the nature of, I don't have plumbing. Or I don't have hot water. Or I don't have heating or cooling. And so with our adoption of the property maintenance code, we are able now to go to the interior and see those conditions and determine, you know, how they can be addressed. It would still be the, the property owner's expense to do that. If we find that there are conditions that are unsafe, unsanitary, uninhabitable, then we do ask that the occupants vacate the property until it can be abated or corrected.
Thank you, that's actually a pretty bleak response, but I appreciate understanding what the process is for that. Thank you for letting us know what the process is. Are there any supports, you mentioned the property management or the property, the interior sort of ability to go in and look at the interior conditions? Are there any resources that exist for landlords for, for bringing up their, their places to habitable? Economic development related resources, potential funding from, I don't know what places. Or if you know of those, you might not, or maybe they don't exist. Do you have any references or avenues for that?
Mayor Enriquez and Councilor Corrin. I know that the city has through the, well, I think some from the economic development department, but I believe also through the housing program, they have some resources that people can apply for, either grants or funding to, to take care of the conditions. I think I remember hearing about a number of those over the past year. So those are a couple of the avenues that are available. I don't know that we have, the NAT team doesn't have that, that follow-through, if you will, once we have made a determination to say, this is what you can do. We have some funding available for you, grant available for you, either for relocation or for correcting those deficiencies.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilor Graham.
Thank you so much, Larry, and I can only call you Lonzo, I'm sorry. B.C. Lonzo, for the presentation. Following on with what Councilor Corrin brought up, when we do have these situations where folks are living in these properties in unsafe conditions, what is the process for coordinating both with other departments in the city, looking at you Natalie Green? Everyone's always looking at Natalie Green. Or our amazing external community partners, looking at you Executive Director Nicole Martinez of Community of Hope. How are we coordinating to find these folks a soft landing place? Any kind of a landing place? At what point are partners brought in who are going to help mitigate the collateral damage of, of people who? And I recognize these are not conditions where people need to be living. However, what's that process?
Mayor Enriquez and Councilor Graham, I probably, I need, probably need to defer to either the housing group or, or to the Community Hope, but I can relate one experience that we had, which was with the Kilby Motel. And when we found that those conditions were unsafe and unoccupable for the inhabitants, we did contact the Community of Hope and they came to the site and they spoke to the residents about having help with the Community of Hope.
How much notice were they, were they given in that case? And by that, I mean the community partners, because I think my concern, I know there were a few properties in town where I think we're kind of on the precipice of this sort of situation. And I want us to act in good faith as much as possible and give everyone the chance to try to get their resources in place. So I guess I just, if, if the process is not laid out, you know, set down, I would love to see that happen somewhere in that decision tree, you know, collaboration with community partners when there are residents in these, in these facilities or in these properties.
Yes, Council, Mayor Enriquez and Councilor Graham. In that one example I gave you, we began the, the inspections and citations on that property. I think during that whole year, there were over 300 calls for service. But we did an inspection in late November, early December of that year. And we listed with all of the corrections that needed to be made with, with the landlord, the property owner. They said they would begin to debate those. And we said, we'll return in three months. We gave three months for them to be worked. And we returned in three months and found that little or no corrections or deficiencies had been addressed. And then that's when we had, took the action and said, we need to have these, these occupants relocated now. And that's when we were contacted. And I believe, I'm almost certain about this, but I can say and defer to Community of Hope for other answers. But I know that there's many of those occupants that they were receiving assistance from Community Hope to be in that location. So I think that there was an information that with their conditions, if they were not improved, they would have to be relocated.
Okay, understood. Thanks. And yeah, I'll just, I'll check back just to see if we can get something a little more, you know, codified, written down, set in stone, just so we make sure that, yeah, everyone is having the best chance possible for good outcomes. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor Flores.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just following up on a question that Councilor Corrin brought up about any sort of city ordinance that we might have in regards to landlord tenant. The housing committee, when I was first on council, seven, going on eight years ago, working with another city attorney, we worked on a landlord tenant. It's to give the landlord and the tenant equity or a balance. For some reason, you know, the finger pointing game, it never came to light. It never came to city council. It was blocked and I, I can only speculate as to what happened. Maybe somewhere in the annals of our safekeeping of proposed legislation ordinance, we have it somewhere. But we went through it with a fine tooth comb. At the time, that and other, before COVID, we had many, many people participate in that committee. We, we had different people, different organizations that were represented. Nicole Martinez was there. She's the only one I see here who was present at the time insofar as community. But, but Rose Garcia participated, many people participated and for the life of me. Because things get kind of mysterious sometimes, we don't get all the information. But we wanted to avoid the problem of someone being unhoused based on the, on the actions of a landlord, you know, a slumlord, you know, for a better word. And, and to give the landlord or landlady their equal rights on this. And, and I think that would be helpful. I think that would be able to give people notice. So I think that would be, that would address the, the notice process that Councilor Corrin brought up. And all of that was covered. It was very well balanced. But insofar as the NAT, doesn't NAT have money to help someone restore their home in the event, in the event it is salvageable? Or is that money gone or where did that money come from?
Mayor Enriquez and Councilor Flores, the NAT program funding that is available is solely devoted to demolition processing or abatement, either board and secure or securing a property. There's not monies funded there for relocation. In fact, we, we have a council budget request for monies for, for the NAT program.
Okay, you don't have it now, but it, it has had funds specific, designated specifically to help someone get their home up to code. No?
Not through the NAT program, no ma'am.
Okay, what, okay, I see Dr. Dennis not, okay. So, so I don't have the best memory in that regard, but there was, I just remember when David Dollahan was here and we attended several meetings, several NAT meetings. I thought there were funds, so I, it might have been from another source. But there's no source whatsoever from which someone, a landlord who doesn't have the, or an owner, excuse me, forget the landlord situation, but an owner of a home. There aren't any funds that are provided by the city to do that?
Mayor Enriquez and Councilor Flores, I don't have knowledge of, of those funds. I know that there aren't any allocated to, to the NAT program.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Flores. Anyone else? Go ahead, Councilor Matisse.
Larry, is the fire department and the codes in your department, have we reviewed all the trailer parks? Are they all safe? Are they on any list of, for access for ambulances, their roads, their flooding, their propane, their tanks? And the safety of the trailer parks? Do we have any in Las Cruces that have come on the abatement list?
Let's see. Mayor Enriquez and Councilor Matisse. We, we have had complaints from some tenants in trailer and mobile homes. I don't know that we have done a complete trailer park inspection, kind of a overall inspection. I would ask maybe Officer Roach to rely on some of his experience if he might recall any of those type of inspections or that were done.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilors. Reference to the, any inspections for trailer parks specific, I don't know of any that have been done.
I'm sorry, I wrote, can you state your name for the record?
My apologies, Michael Roach with Code Enforcement. So I don't know of any inspections per se directly for, to a trailer park as a whole. Typically for the NAT program, we're looking specifically at the individual locations or flats. We don't have anything on the NAT list that I'm aware of, of a trailer, in a trailer park specific that the NAT program is, is looking into. Does that answer your questions?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Nichols. I just want to add that through, through my experience with the NAT program, the NAT team, there, there's two separate issues we're discussing here. Those, those structures that are occupied and those that are unoccupied. When we look at unoccupied vacant and abandoned buildings, that's when we're looking at the abatement. That's when we're looking at the demolition because of the the unwanted fires, of the illegal entry, of the illegal uses and crime that take place that, that police department also gets numerous calls in response to, codes does. And those are when we're looking at the worst case scenario. And so when we get to the situation where the residence or the occupancy is occupied, in, in that case, it develops, it develops into a more sensitive and takes more precautions and, and notifications and things of that. And just because there has been some lessons learned along the way, I'll turn it over to our acting city manager so he can respond to, to some of those issues. Because I, I agree with counsel, we don't want people displaced and, and things of that nature. But the nuisance abatement is definitely there for vacant and abandoned buildings that, that present a hazard to our community and to our responders. Nick Conny?
Thank you, Mayor Enriquez, City Council. Counselor Graham, you had mentioned a, a very critical question on how we approach occupied buildings and, and other counselors as well. And that, that's a great question. What, what we have done and learning from, from the past is we've, and thanks to Nicole Martinez, who's presented to the Health PRC. She presented a presentation back in the fall. It, it was a dialogue on how to address unsheltered homelessness and encampments. And after watching that presentation, Nicole and I, we've, we've talked. I appreciate her entertaining me to, to meet with her, to see, and to really explain what this presentation is and the philosophies and the principles of it is, is something that we've discussed in that meeting. And we've met with police, we've met with fire, we've met with community development on how we can implement the same philosophies on how we approach encampments, is the same philosophy on how we approach one of the motels in town that we're dealing with so that we can learn from what we've done in the past. Talking with Nicole, we're talking about timelines. She'd prefer more time, but, but she's said, if we can give her at least 30 days, her and her team, to, to share the resources with, with those so we can find a soft landing, find another housing opportunity. She's mentioned some grant opportunities that other municipalities have won in, in, in the past. And so we're looking into that and other opportunities on how we can find transition funds for, for those in occupied facilities to find them another transition when it comes to housing. And so this isn't something where, in that, I, I want to make it clear that staff is very, very cognizant and aware that these individuals, they have to, they, they have to go to a place of shelter. And so we, we do understand the levers at hand. We're very sensitive to that. We're becoming more aware thanks to Nicole and, and her partners as we're working through this. But I just wanted to let counsel be aware that those are things that we definitely do have to codify. We'll work on, we are working on that. And we appreciate the partners and committees such as Nicole to enlighten us and make sure that we find a, a place that's right for, for everyone. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to open it up to any members of the public that would like to speak. Yeah, come on up, Nicole.
Nicole Martinez, Director of Mesia Valley Community of Hope. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I feel like this is sort of a related topic, although housing could take its own work session. So I think just sort of tied into what we were talking about that we're really on a tipping edge of not having, you know, enough affordable housing units in our community. This, this tipping point of having even more people being unhoused in our community. And so we're really aware of our housing opportunities. And sometimes it means places that we, we might not think are our own standards, but do pass inspections. And then from that point on, sometimes if we have, you know, residents that have big challenges, the, the units might deteriorate somewhat. So I did want to point out that there are city ARPA funds that the Community of Hope applied for, was awarded. And so in those situations, when you're doing possibly abatement on an occupied apartment complex, we have said, for anybody that is using a Community of Hope voucher, that we can use our ARPA funding to mitigate that, that risk to the client and the landlord. So I know there are some properties right now being looked at. There haven't been great timeline notices. So I, I think that this is just like a call to say, like, let's, let's give some more notice to Community of Hope if these are units where they might have residents there and where possibly Community of Hope could help that landlord bring the units up to code. We would love to be able to do that, especially if it was our residents that caused any of those damages. That's what the ARPA funding was for, so that we could keep them there. I realize that it doesn't mean that it could bring all of the units up to standard, but those are case by case scenarios, seeing how many of them aren't passing inspection and how many we can improve. So just want to make sure that everybody knows that there is that funding for our vouchers. You know, Counselor McClure, I believe last week talked about, you know, one of her constituents talking about the rising rents, and we are just seeing that repeatedly. We've had several apartment complexes that we've been working with raise their rents, doubling the rents with only a few months' notice, pricing many of the people out. So units that, that were once about $550 are now going for about $850. Anybody on, you know, social security, the first year disability is getting $943, so well outside of what they can afford. And, and we're not just talking a couple of complexes. I mean, we're talking about like at least eight complexes that we know of that are hundreds of units. So we're really interested in keeping what we have and bringing it up to code and working as best we can, making sure we have appropriate timelines to find other avenues if we need to. And I appreciate the reaching out that, that we do get so that we can help with that. But maybe if there is something we can do when there are, you know, meetings that are being had, even including, I think, Housing Department in those meetings within CLC, making sure that they're aware and at those meetings so they can work with us directly as well. We want to be as helpful as possible. Of course, we also need to call on our legislators to make sure that we are meeting fair market rents, that, that, you know, we can get some improvements and, and raise that ceiling for the fair market rent so that we can use our vouchers, because we're literally at risk of turning away hundreds of dollars that we, you know, apply for every year for vouchers. And when those leave the city, then that's really competitive, hard to get those back. So we're looking at losing staffing, looking at losing tons of rental assistance that we've been really successful in getting from HUD and MFA and the VA and the City of Las Cruces. And just to note too, that, you know, sometimes we're using even city-funded housing vouchers through the tenant-based rental assistance program on some of these properties that need some improvements. And that's when we really would look toward our landlord risk mitigation funds through ARPA to help improve those conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Yes, ma'am. Come on up.
Hello, Mayor. City councilors, thank you so much for allowing us a public comment on this important subject. I just wanted to, my name, yes. My name is Martha Rodriguez, and I am the president of Las Esperanzas, a neighborhood organization in the Mesquite Historic District. And I'm here to, just a word of caution to, to all of us, you know, is, number one, of course, is to make sure that people who live in those properties do find a resource to, to find another location. And I think that it would be important to include that in the process. Because right now, I don't see anything in writing that says, okay, well, we're going to do this. If somebody's going to be unhoused, then we're going to do this. This is the process we're going to take. A second important part that I am, that, that was the reason that I'm here, is that we want to make sure that historic preservation is also at the, up there for all of us in this city. You know, it just makes me so upset and so sad to see buildings that can be restored destroyed. My husband and I restore historic properties. And I'm sorry I lost the picture. I wanted to show it at least to the mayor. I wanted to show you a property that was about to be demolished. It was in horrible condition. It was secure though, so it, you know, it didn't, there were no, there were, there wasn't anybody living there or going in there because the property was secured. But we were able to restore that property, and it's beautiful now. I mean, it, I really want you to see these pictures. But every time that we destroy one of those historic properties, we destroy our history. I mean, look at Mesia. People go to Mesia, they're drawn to Mesia. Why? Because of their beautiful preserved historic properties. It's not necessarily because of the food, because we have wonderful restaurants here in Las Cruces, right? We have really good food here too. But people go over there to that little town. Why? Because they know how to preserve their history. They know how to preserve their historic properties. So please, I encourage you, on this process that we saw today, we didn't see anything about historic preservation, even though when asked, yes, the response was, yes, we go to, to the historic preservation person, liaison, is my time up. And, but it's not in the process. I don't see it written in the process. So if somebody's not there who doesn't know what the process is and they go and look at the process, it's not part of the steps that are taken for these historic properties. There's no steps there to talk about unhoused, people that are going to be unhoused. So those two things, I encourage you to please ask, put them in the process. Because otherwise, we have no assurance that those historic properties are going to be preserved, if at all possible. And those people that are going to be unhoused are not going to be left out in the cold. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead. Come on.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Councilors. My name is Deb Dennis. I'm really delighted with the discussion today and the questions that are being asked. And I'm very much encouraged by suggestions that I'm hearing from council. And I'd simply like to encourage what I've heard. One thing I'd like to do real quickly is distinguish between vacant housing and occupied. Understandably, there's great concern for individuals in occupied housing that is undergoing abatement. Our concern with historic preservation has to do with the vacant and abandoned housing, because what ends up happening is that when people don't pay their property taxes and fall in a rear, the city acquires the property and then they let it sit. I gave you an example already of what's happening at 643 East Pacocho. What happens is, once the city owns it and they say it needs abatement, as with 643 East Pacocho, they board it up. And then they say, well, the property owner isn't abating it, so we'll just go ahead and demolish it. And as you know, I've pointed out that in Chapter Two, they're, they're saying that city-owned property does not have to go through the Historic Preservation Commission or any process to be demolished. So the real concern are the vacant properties that are city-owned in historic districts or simply historic properties. Because the other interesting thing about the ordinance is, it does not include, as you might think, all historic property, only properties that are in historic districts. And so they very cheerfully went out the weekend before Christmas and destroyed a 1920 home on North Torneo. Why? Because they can. It's not in a historic district. So as long as a property is not in a historic district, it's not, it has no, the city development thinks they can do anything they want with it without consultation, as what happened with this North Torneo property. What I'd like to come back to though, and is more important, is let's find funding for adaptive reuse. Community development, NAT, everything they do is focused on demolition. Let's find funding for them to do something other than demolition. I would like to suggest, I'll just finish the sentence, let's put the experience and expertise of economic development, and specifically the experience of the Neighborhood Services Program together with community development and get them working to find the funding and the programming so that houses don't have to be demolished, but they can be adapted for reuse. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Oh, ma'am, just one second. Go ahead, Counselor Flores. She had a question for you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Dr. Dennis. You said that if a property isn't in a, in an historic district, no consideration is given to that particular property.
That's correct.
Who makes that decision? The state or the city?
The city.
The city says that if it's not...
If the city, if the, if the property is outside a historic district, the Historic Preservation Commission is not permitted to make any recommendations regarding what happens to a historic property.
Well, do you know, or maybe it's a legal question, but who would have, if, if the property is determined to be historic, shouldn't it be protected by the Historic Preservation Act or laws or whatever they're called?
Well, that was certainly...
Of the state. Wouldn't that supersede whatever the city might have? I would imagine it would.
Not if it isn't, it has to be on the state register.
Oh, well, then, then it...
And, and in this particular case, on North Torneo, it was a historic home, but it was not to the level that it was on the state register.
Had it been, did it apply?
But this is one of the problems, but if you go back and you look at the transcript from November 6th, having to do with the 643 East Pacocho property, you were told initially that, oh, no, it's not in a historic district. So we don't have to consult, we don't have to run it through the Historic Preservation Commission. And they had not. And yet, it was on public input that we were able to tell you that, one, it was in a historic district, and, two, it did require consultation by state law. And so council tabled the issue until February 5th to allow the Historic Preservation Specialist time to consult with Santa Fe, with the New Mexico State Historic Preservation Division.
And what was that outcome? What was the outcome?
Well, we got here on, on February 5th, and Counselor Mayor Protem Bencomo said, we'll table the issue indefinitely. And you voted. And it's been tabled indefinitely. And Mr. Nichols has said, well, we've taken it off the agenda, we've boarded up the house, and we're going to leave it sit. And so we have no opportunity to speak to the idea of adaptive reuse. Community development was asking you for $28,000 to demolish that house. And if you look at the photos, I'm sorry, it's not in the condition they describe. And the neglect is of the city's own doing. It abandoned the property. That's what's so outrageous about this.
Is the city the owner?
Yes.
Okay.
The city has been the owner since 2004. The city has been the owner since 2004.
Okay. Thank you so much.
And the city, the city had used, it had been part of the Weed and Seed Program.
Oh, yes, okay. Thank you, Dr. Dennis. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other members of the public?
My name is Dolores Archuleta, Mayor Protem, because I am speaking as a Mayor Protem. I was born and raised in the, in the historic district, that is the reason I'm here. I see so many homes that are still there. I'll tell you a little story. A little boy close to 329 East Bay where we were born was choking on a piece of thurtia. The mother sent, to get my mother over there to take care of it, because she couldn't handle it. She got the thurtia out and saved his life. That was my husband. Now, the buildings are still there, they've been vacant for years and years, but why do we continue to get new counselors in every time and do the same thing over and over and over again? It's not your fault, and I don't know whose fault, or should we blame anybody? It's a big issue, but we need to get this down, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms., yes, next. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name is Judy Berryman, and I'd like to make a couple of clarifications just for the questions that were answered. As part of the Historic Preservation Commission, we have been attempting to have Chapter 40 and now Chapter 2 revised to include all historic resources to be protected. Currently under Chapter 40, currently under Chapter 2, only properties that are in a recognized historic district can be put before the HPC. So in this case, we're very handicapped in terms of trying to protect historic properties. The second huge concern I have with the Nat program is that there doesn't seem to be very much community input or community members on the Nat team. I think that would be very beneficial. When we talk about that they would, that they will contact the Historic Preservation Officer, that doesn't necessarily mean that the HPC will have an opportunity to review the property that may be demolished. I'm also concerned with the Nat budget. Everything is oriented to demolition. As earlier said before, let's find some other alternatives. Certainly, historic districts, historic resources are being ignored in terms of economic reliability. As was mentioned before, people come into an area because of historic resources. But if we can't respect the historic resources by not having protection and ordinances, then stuff like Realize Las Cruces, Chapter 40, Chapter 2, they really mean nothing. My final remark is, in Chapter 2, we've been trying to have changes made. And the critical part in Chapter 2 is that it gives a carte blanche for the city to abolish, to demolish, any historic structure that is owned by the city. And that would be under their Section 2F, which needs to be changed. So I thank you for the opportunity, and I'm open to any questions if you have any. Thank you.
That's my, thank you. Ma'am, on the fourth row.
Good afternoon, Councilors, Mayor, City Manager. My name is Joe Reapract. I've been speaking a lot the last 18 months on historic preservation. Much of what I learned in this city about historic preservation came from trying to save the Trest Clubhouse at the former Las Cruces Country Club property. In that process, I was trying to negotiate between developers and between the city, which did not own the building, had never owned the building, but had also let it fall into disrepair and become a greater nuisance than it might have been, because they allowed the owners to experience a protracted period where they did not have to maintain that property, they didn't have to board it. And so when Dr. Nichols talks about three levels of seriousness of a property, the city has in the past, even with private properties, and Dr. Dennis has focused on city-owned properties as well, but they have allowed situations that could have been handled at Level 1 or Level 2 to progress to the point where it is a disaster, it is an emergency. That happened with the Trest Clubhouse. They were able to demonstrate that they'd had X number of fires and calls out at that property. The property was still sound, but because they could cite the number of fire calls, it made it very difficult to argue against the points that the city tried to make on that so that the developer could have their way with it. What I want to comment on here is that when Dr. Nichols speaks about the processes involved, that counts on two basic things, very basic things. One is that the process is articulated clearly and succinctly so that people can pick up a folder someplace and see, here's what the process is, whether that's you as counselors, or us as the public, or some out-of-town owner. There has to be an articulation of the process, and it has to be accessible in some way that people can encounter it and use it. And I appreciate the suggestion that came from the counselors in this regard. But the other thing is that one of the things that you and we rely on is the honesty and trustworthiness and diligence of city staff. And in this respect, while Dr. Nichols is talking about his process, he's neglecting how the current Historic Preservation Specialist is essentially not doing his job. And he's sometimes doing that by omission, he's sometimes doing it by obfuscation. And in the case of one of the most recent situations, he's done it by lying. And then by handling, being handled through community development in the, to the sense of detriment to the building. I, I can document this to you, Dr. Nichols, and I don't know how to handle this, other than to call it out.
Okay, that's good, your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll stand for questions if you want.
No, that's fine, thank you. Was there anyone else from the public? All right, thank you all. I just want to, again, reiterate that the whole nuisance abatement is really worst-case scenario. There are some steps and some things that we need to look at as a city and, and to work on, but to the council, to the council that voted in the Property Maintenance Code, thank you. Because that was, that's a huge step. As Ms. Archuleta came up and said, why do we continue and continue? That was one of the big ones, is the international codes were adopted back in 2003, and this is 2021 code of the Property Maintenance Code. That's how you get from Level 3 to Level 2 to Level 1, is, is now having a code that will help our, our, our city staff, code enforcement, police, fire, and community development to address those issues with landlords and property owners. So, thank you, that was a huge step in getting, going in the right direction to avoiding the worst-case scenarios that we're addressing now. Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Nichols.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Nichols, if I recall correctly, there was a person who was designated to take care of Nat. And in meetings that we had, she would be, it was a woman, she would be present. Does that position still exist? She was, I think, the community liaison, and I think she was an employee of the city.
Mayor Enricus and Counselor Flores. The, the history of the Nat had to do with initially, as I mentioned, when Mr. Dahlahan introduced programming to acquire housing, properties for developing affordable housing. I don't ever recall that a person was designated as a, as a leader or a taking leadership on, on the Nat program until the City Manager's Office asked me to take the lead on the program that we now have in place.
Okay, then, there, there was a woman who was designated, and I don't know if anybody has that history, thank you.
Yes, Counselor Flores, you, you are correct. Peralta, I can't. Kim? Yeah, Kim Peralta was, she was assigned, she was under legal and somewhat of a case manager position that, that pretty much kept track of everything. And, yeah, you are correct, but that no longer exists, they've changed it. It used to be the Neighborhood Action Team, now it's a nuisance abatement team, so there's different direction, and that's where it's at. So, that's what, that's what kind of the update was today to, to update us all on what's going on now, moving forward.
And Mayor Enricus and Counselor Flores, that is correct. Ms. Peralta was a legal assistant that made sure that our legalese and acquiring, the city's legalese and acquiring properties were, were the correct measures to take. But she wasn't doing inspections and that sort of...
Mayor? If I may? Yes, Counselor, please.
I, I just, I am a new counselor, but just for the record and the truth, as the former mayor, I fully supported the Mesquite and the Alameda districts when they became reality. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nichols. Next, we'll move to 3.2, GO Bond Quarterly Update, Mr. David Sidio.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilors. My name is David Sidio, your Public Works Director. I, and also Ms. Natalie Green, will be presenting to you our quarterly update for the 2022 GO Bond projects. Just as a recap, there were four questions approved as part of this GO Bond cycle. First one was New Fire Station Number 9, the continuation of the improvements at the East Mesa Public Rec Complex, affordable housing, and park improvements. For Fire Station Number 9, at this point in time, the design development on the project is 100% complete, and the construction documents are at 90%. We are working to finish those up because we're estimating bidding the project here next month, and the estimated cost for the project is 3.2 million. As you can see from the project's schedule, at this point in time, that green vertical line going through there represents the timeline where we're on schedule for the project. For the park improvements, there were two that are the priorities that this funding will address. And I'll go in a little bit more into detail for Number 2. But the project for La Llorona Park is to upgrade amenities, the restrooms, and make some repairs to the trail. At this point in time, the design development on that project is 100% complete. The construction documents are at 90% as well, and we're moving forward to completion of that. Now, staff has had discussions with the International Boundary Water Commission, which is the permitting authority in the area for the project. Those conversations have been going well. They do require that they do get the 100% construction documents before issuing the permit. So we're looking at getting that here fairly shortly, and we're estimating on bidding the project here in August. Now, if there are any funds left over from this project, those will be assigned to Tell Brook Park for any equipment replacements, if there are any. Just to show a little bit on the schedule, again, this project is on schedule, based on the Gantt chart that you see there. But also, to share with you some of those photos that we have in the recent quarterly updates, these are the conditions that the funding will address. Now, for the continuation of improvements over at the East Mesa Public Rec Complex, we are working on finishing the remaining scope of work from the mass plan on that first phase. At this point in time, we're 80% complete with that construction. Items remaining from that is the sod on the 10-acre park and a few items of landscaping that should be wrapped up. Here, within three weeks after they begin, estimated, we are looking at having that sod start somewhere in mid-April. The musco lighting part of that funding has been completed. And lastly, we are working on the continuation of those improvements. Right now, the design is at 30%. And I'll go over what that includes. So as part of the continuation of those improvements on the park, we did have sand volleyball courts, basketball courts, concession building, restrooms at the 10-acre park, more street furniture, and then site grading. Now, the site grading, again, if you recall from two previous quarterly updates, that was to help with the skate park. Now, the skate park is not part of the funding, that has its own dedicated funding. However, we were able to maximize this money to help that project along based on the limited funding that it has. Now, for the sand volleyball courts, initially, there was discussion to have two to four. Through discussions with the User Department, Parks and Rec, they would like to see eight courts to be able to provide enough courts based on demand. Again, this is a layout that currently, right now, staff is working with the end user to finalize some of those locations as they go through the design process. Again, here's the schedule for each of those three categories. As you see up top, the remaining scope. We are ahead of schedule at this point in time right now, and looking to complete that here somewhere in the month of May. Down below, the musco lighting, well ahead of what that was scheduled out to, that project is complete. And then, lastly, the continuation down below. Now, you may notice, we're a little bit behind on this schedule. However, staff feels that we're going to be able to catch up in time for construction of those projects. I also wanted to share with you some aerial photos of what those improvements are. On your left, you can see that the two baseball softball fields have the sod. The lighting is up throughout the complex. You also have on the right, the pickleball courts and the restrooms. And also, the multi-use fields to the north of that have been sodded. Just to show a little bit more of the area itself from a greater perspective, coming back, that in the forefront there on your left picture is the 10-acre park. And again, those detailed photos on the right actually are a little bit zoomed in of those improvements, the right there on the park. And at this point, I'll go and turn it over to Ms. Natalie Green.
Good afternoon, Members of Council, Natalie Green, Housing and Neighborhood Services, for the record. An update on the affordable housing projects. The bond was sold on March 14th, so we had a really favorable rate, and you'll be getting a full update on that from the City Manager's Office at a later council meeting. The fund proceeds will be available to the city after April 11th. Several of our projects that will utilize that GO Bond funding are under construction. So Three Sisters, the 70-unit apartment complex for families is under construction. Padrina Senior Apartments also started construction. Our Peachtree Canyon Apartments closed at the State Board of Finance last week, so it's moving on to the New Mexico Mortgage Finance Authority Board, and then it'll come to this council for final closing on the loan agreements. Our land acquisition is still working through the appraisal and purchasing agreement process. Our revolving loan funds, we have 10 houses under construction right now. Only three are utilizing the construction loan fund, and those are framed, moving along great. We're still under pre-development for Amador Crossing. We've moved on to the engineering phase, but the preliminary site development is complete. We've also submitted two additional grant requests to DFA. We've also submitted two additional grant requests to DFA for about $4 million, and we should receive notice on those fairly quickly. And then we're exploring some additional partnerships with other developers, so we have some additional pipeline projects that we're working through. This is just some updated construction pictures from Three Sisters. Building 1 has received their plumbing rough-in inspection, and so they'll be starting to pour that foundation. They're also received their retaining wall permit, so they're building like this big 3x4 Lego crazy 20-foot wall to help retain the entire site. And then after that, they'll work on Building 2, which is the main structure that holds most of the apartments. And then Padrina, again, also kicked off, so they've cleared the site, and then they're starting to bring in fill. So as you drive past those sites, you'll see those -- that construction progress. And with that, David and I will stand for any questions you have.
No, thank you, Natalie and David. Any questions from council? None? Okay, good. Let me see if there's any members of the public that would like to make some comments. Seeing none, okay. Thank you for your presentations. That concludes our agenda items, so looking for adjournment?
So moved, Graham.
Second, Corinne.
This is on the motion to adjourn the work session. Counselor McClure?
Yes.
Counselor Matisse?
Yes.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Corrine?
Yes.
Counselor Flores?
Yes.
Counselor Benkomo is absent, and mayor?
Yes.